K L T V Soundcheck, K L T V Soundcheck. I am here to help you with your K L T V soundcheck. Please tell me what audio you would like me to listen to. Okay, I will listen to the audio and start. The audio contains a series of non-speech sounds, such as a musical instrument, a whistle, a note, and a sound effect. I will now listen to the audio. The audio is a musical instrument playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again. The music is a笙音 playing a chord. I will now listen to the audio again.
Okay, we'll uh we'll get going here. We appreciate everybody coming in, welcome. Uh we'll start with the invocation where you're uh pleased to have the Kalama Mayor here leading us in that today. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Ruder, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here today. Um you know, I was just thinking about prayer and why I pray. And I think that um people don't under- I mean, for my personal thing, people don't under- I mean to for my personal thing, I use prayer as communication between myself and God and a way of building a relationship that you can't you can't have communication once a week, once a month, only when you need them, it's a day daily, hourly, minute by minute relationship that you need to build on and not use God as a uh fair weathered friend or a friend of convenience, this is a um someone, something to believe in that gives you spiritual growth every day, so um I thank you very much for letting me speak here today. Gracious God, we gather here today seeking your guidance and wisdom for this county commission meeting. Grant them the clarity of mind, unity of purpose, and hearts open to your truth as they make decisions that will impact those in which they serve. Bless these commissioners with discernment, integrity, and compassion. May their discussions be productive and the actions that they make be just and reflect the common good for the people who reside here in Calhoun County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you, suppose one join me for the pledge?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of September twenty second to twenty fourth.
So moved.
Hey, we have a motion to approve the minutes of uh September twenty second to twenty fourth, any questions, corrections we're aware of? Okay, see none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor, aye, thank you. I'll run through consent agenda, call for bids. Uh request for proposals has gone out, Lamville Gas Management Services scheduled for October thirtieth, two thousand twenty five at three P M. This is a three year contract, that's what we typically do is three years contract, it's it's up, so it's out for proposals again. Uh typically, or I I shouldn't say typically, over the last three years, we've spent about a half a million dollars under this contract uh for work at the landfill. Call for hearings, we have a public hearing, uh two thousand twenty five budget amendment establishing a new internal service fund titled Sheriff Equipment and Top and Technology Replacement Fund scheduled for October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five at nine thirty. Um we've always had this fund, we had it under a different department heading, and so we're establishing it under the the sheriffs themselves, so it's I look at it as more of a transfer, but technically it is a new new fund. Agreements, contracts, bid awards, change order number one to contract with All Stripes LLC for the two thousand twenty five countywide pavement striping project. Uh the change is ten thousand five hundred and eighty six dollars, putting in a total of five forty nine oh ninety four. Uh we, this was at our request, we found some additional uh striping requests and and they fulfilled that for us. This is the first year we've had these folks and I think we're pretty happy with them, time will tell, but I think they've done a really good job. Personal service agreement with Medico to provide inmate healthcare at the jail and ju- and juvenile detention. First year's annual cost will be four million dollars, eight hundred and twenty seven and zero cents. Uh what I can tell you is this one gives all of us sitting up here heartburn. Um the reality in the state of Washington now, it's hard to find insurance companies that want to do business in here. Our tort situation is, I mean, the state of Washington alone has about three billion dollars in tort claims against it, it's just kind of out of control. So the the provider we were using said, we don't want to do business in Washington State anymore, we put out for bid. And Medico is the lowest bidder, but it's a one point three million dollar increase from the last contract. So this really gives us heartburn and but we don't have a whole lot of choices, so we'll try and work with that. But if you're a person that talks to your legislatures, we need some tort reform. Uh agreement with for special deputy prosecutor services with Matthew W Lynch, attorney. Uh this is for labor negotiations and and uh arbitration type things. Um we use, if we're into a situation where it looks like there might be a contract conflict of interest, we have contracts with these outside firms that then take that on. And this is one of those firms that would work with us for uh labor negotiations, any arbitration we might enter into. It's a three year contract with these folks. Resolutions, resolution certified in the call consolidated Dyke Improvement District, number two budget. Resolution for relating to contracted indebtedness declaring an official intent to reimburse capital expenditures in connection with the construction of improvements in the Calhoun County Event Center uh for proceeds of future bothering borrowing. We we look at, we do some, we send the bonding for some of the work over there through the county, they can bond it themselves, but but the rate differential for the county to do it is much, much better, it just makes more financial sense for over there. And as long as we determine that it's not in, it ha- it doesn't have any significant impact on the county's bonding capacity, we're unhappy to do that for them, and that's one of one of these deals. Board correspondence, uh FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding two thousand twenty five dam safety inspection. And then we have executed contract agreements, we have three warranty deeds with the River Street River Suites condominium. Uh one for unit three B, one for unit one A, and one for unit three A. Then we have vouchers in the amount of two million, two fifty seven, nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety eight cents. That's consent agenda, anybody have any, have any questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners, just a quick one, when uh for item number five, when we're hiring uh outside attorney services to provide services following your lead in our, how do, how is oversight provided from your office or from our attorney's office or whatever, how do we make sure that they're in line with the conservative perspective that we are and have engaged you to follow with us and us with you?
Well, they put out a contract and they 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 look at the, there's initial look at the attorney firms that apply to do this and and I would say the initial in insight, and I don't know if anybody from uh uh legal is on, but it's initialized oversight is th- that arena under, you know, our um our county attorneys, they're the first level of oversight to look at that. We have had, if they've had things that they um thought are not working right, then they will chat with us, be in executive session or something, if they think it's something we need to be involved with, but they're the first level of oversight.
Okay, so basically working for our our district attorney.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm. David, did I get that semi right, pretty close?
Yeah, I think so, when I joined as a panelist, it cut out the audio, so I missed half half of what you said, what I heard was that we initially reviewed the different firms to see the hourly rate, and then I missed what she said.
Uh Ron was asking who's the who's the initial oversight and how that works and and my response was that your department, the department over there is initial oversight. If you've had concerns or you have anything that you think needs to bring to us in uh in the past, it has been discussed with the Commissioners in an executive session or something of that nature.
Yeah, that's accurate, and they also will send a invoice for the work that they do. And I I vet that and I make sure that the work description is correct and that the hour hours that were worked on it are reasonable. And we've had very honest attorneys accurately billing, haven't had an issue yet. But we do have that uh oversight over it where we are closely looking at the billings to ensure that they're accurate and that there are no issues, and if there were issues, yes, we would discuss with you.
Wh- when you're in the process of picking a a firm, do you, is part of the process to see how they align with what you know to be the values in in Calhoun County? Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say, yeah, and we look at it's always best if we if we can find information about what other counties are billing or are being charged. And for this one, for example, we got, we're getting a a match rate with what Clallum County is paying. Uh and it's a very reasonable rate for the type of work that they're doing. Uh I think it's it's over a hundred dollars an hour cheaper than the next closest one that we found. And they're a very qualified firm, so uh I think on on this one, we're very fortunate and but yeah, we do do that rate comparison.
Okay, thank you, did that help Ron?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, David, for chiming in, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on consent items? Okay, see none, and entertain a motion to approve?
And move approval of the consent agenda.
Hey, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, last chance. Okay, see none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor, aye, thank you. Okay, we'll head into uh our motion items, first one on is Public Works. Before we get into that, uh no, go ahead and come up, you guys. Um I'm just going to give a brief uh, because I know there's going to be some conversation here, and I'll just give you a brief iteration of how we look at things over here, just so nobody's surprised. Number one, if you have comments you want to make, we encourage them, you're welcome to come up, we're not, I I'm very much don't put limits, uh we don't put limits, if it gets to be just a consistent same comment, same comment, we might ask to move along, but you're encouraged to come up and and say your piece. You are, if you have questions for staff, you're more than happy to ask them. There, our staff is is bright, intelligent, and they're they're perfectly able to to answer those questions, so so you don't no, no problems with that, if you have direct questions with staff. The only things that we require is that everything be done respectfully, no name calling. We're we're more than happy to answer tough questions, don't tone your questions down, be sure and ask anything that you you think that you want to have an answer to, just be respectful with our people and and we'll return that and we'll all get along great, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, Sean Rowley, Public Works, here with me today is Susan Newgenius, county engineer. Uh the first motion item uh is a bid award to Glacier Environmental Services for the headquarters landfill gas collection and control system expansion project. The total cost is one million, four hundred and ninety thousand, one seventy six and forty nine cents. So this is a expansion to our gas collection system, it was for the installation of twenty vertical wells. An average depth on that's about a hundred and ten feet with about eighteen thousand feet of linear pipe also being installed in here. This will help us to have a long term gas collection system for the areas that this is going over and is pretty much the industry standard for long term gas collection.
Yeah, we had a great conversation on that yesterday, and Commissioner Farrell asked, I think, some great questions, maybe you can explain why we do those and how they operate and and I I I know it's all to comply with environmental standards and why we were deciding to go vertical versus horizontal this time.
Yeah, so horizontal wells are what we install during the construction and buildup of the cells, over time they do degrade, they'll, you know, um the waste will shift and sink, and so we may get some uh poorer wells after a period of time. With the vertical wells, they drill a three foot hole um to the depth of that we need, the deepest one on this is about a hundred and fifty feet. Within that well, there'll be a six inch casing that has uh perforations within it. The rest of it will be filled with a gravel, towards the top, the casing will become solid with a uh plug around it. So the entire landfill is under a vacuum at all times to extract the gas, and so these will be a more um efficient and optimal way to extract that gas for the long term. After it's been extracted, it goes to our flares and is burned off currently.
Okay. We use vertical wells at Tenet Way?
We do, we do, as we closed Tenet Way landfill down, we did install a few vertical wells. This will be a um much larger system in the long run, it should be more efficient. Um I did would want to add that at the bottom of a handful of these wells will be leachate pumps so that they uh help continue to extract leachate from the landfill system.
Okay. Any other questions up here?
I, after we talked yesterday, Sean, I was thinking about something that may or may not come to fruition. Um but with the P U D looking at taking that gas and converting it into electricity, I don't know if that's still an option, but moving forward, are these vertical wells, is that system going to be easier to transition to that if we do happen to get to that point?
Long term, they will be easier to manage, um the gas quality coming out of it would be more consistent. Um the radius on that is about a hundred feet, so they do affect a larger area of the landfill itself, so there's less tuning that needs to be done unlike a horizontal well, which would be a smaller influence area. The gas quality that comes out would be, like I said, more consistent, and so it'd be easier to manage a um generator system or an R and G system in the future if needed.
Do we have a prognosis on what the volume of gas is coming out of there now versus what it ultimately will be?
You know, as as the waste decays over the years, the gas profile will decline. Um some of our oldest cells from the Warehouser days produced no gas at all. The first five years is really the ramp up period for gas to be coming on. Um currently, we extract about a thousand C F M out there um at the current time. With the installation of vertical wells, we do expect that to um go up some, not a significant value, as the landfill can use to grow and we continue to fill in our cells, it'll steadily climb until we reach a maximum uh peak there, and I think that we're we're unsure of what that'll look like in the next twenty years, but we'll continue to do the best practices possible up there.
Well, living in a state that is constantly talking about looking for alternative sources of energy, uh hopefully we they can work something out to where that would be useful uh in some way, because it's a naturally occurring gas at the landfill that we could capture and and utilize. So hopefully we can get that worked out moving forward, but.
Yeah, another way to put that volume, when we were looking at an agreement with P U D uh till issues got in the way, not not issues from either myself or ourselves or P U D. They were looking at that volume we currently do with power for four thousand to forty five hundred homes, if you want to put it, look at it at that in that perspective, so.
Right now is is uh what's happening with the gas off the Tenet Way site?
The Tenet Way site is flared as well, it is a much smaller flare, um I believe it's currently about three hundred F C F M.
Okay.
It's actually dropping in level currently, so in the next year or so, we will probably need to downsize that flare to a smaller flare system.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Just, is this contract merely for the hardware and installation? Or does it also include the monitoring of the gas collected at each of these uh sites?
Great question, so this is only for the installation of the well system and the piping associated with it. The management of the wells is done by our landfill staff.
Okay, so from my previous experience, that's very important that we tested all the gas at each location to make sure that it was the methane and the burnable stuff, and of course, throughout the landfill, you have different compositions dependent upon what was put in there, so it has, the gas at each location has to be monitored and it goes to one central uh flat flare right now still?
Correct, so our staff monitors each well independently and tunes those wells independently on a monthly basis. Sometimes if the well is more active, it may be bimonthly at that point, and then the system goes to a, we have two flares currently, and those run in tandem with each other.
Right, right, so since as you put, it's all under a vacuum, but that vacuum needs to be managed carefully.
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
For bribing people today. The candy.
Yeah, I can, yeah. Um, I, as you know, I'm I'm super tight. And so I need to ask uh, the installation of these wells and the operation of these wells. Uh, does it offset? I know there's safety involved because it's building up. However, it does oppose that much of a uh, a danger or is it paying for itself? The electricity that we're getting out of it, I know you said they're declining, but the cost of doing this is going to be, I would imagine quite a bit. And are we going to receive that much benefit out of doing this?
That's a kind of a tough one because we don't really get any benefit. I guess the benefit is we get to keep the landfill open.
We stay in compliance.
Stay compliant with ecology.
The agreement with the P U D fell through.
Until we can find a a way to sell that gas, then I don't know that there's much benefit there flow. It's just a more of a cost of doing business, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, since we have the one up on um, you know what I'm talking about. Do we need to have that open? I mean, it's still a great cost to the county to put the wells in and to operate them. So the need for that to continue that is that greater than, I mean, because we have other options, other locate locations, correct?
So the the operating cost for the the wells themselves is not a significant value as it is to the construction of them. You know, we have an employee that does the management of that and the tuning of those wells on a consistent basis. And I I would say that um, it's the best option currently.
Just hate to spend money where we might not need to, you know, like I said, I'm I'm tight. I can't, I apologize for that, but but putting some money out in in the hundreds, thousands when we don't necessarily need them right now, you know, maybe we could put them off, put it off for a while or.
So currently, these are required to be put in.
Are they? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and flow the ones at Tenet Way, those are also part of the post-closure of that landfill for us to stay in compliance. They have to be in there. So it's not a, it's not a matter of us wanting to do it. It's a matter of we have to do it in order to part of the closure of that landfill in order to continue to keep the current landfill in compliance, we have to put those in. Yeah.
So one additional question. So I presume we still presently put all the piping underneath for collecting the leachate. And of course, that collects gas also. So we're still pulling gas off from the leachate lines as part of the overall program and these are supplemental wells?
Yeah, so our leachate pipelines are put in the bottom of every cell.
Correct.
Um, certain other infrastructure associated with that is put in during the filling of the cells. Um, the vertical wells are going to be much more efficient at extracting that gas and maintaining our overall compliance there.
Right, but you're still pulling gas from the leachate lines also.
Yeah, we'll still pull gas on all of our horizontal wells until they uh, have nothing left in them.
Okay.
Sean, if we didn't collect the gas and burn it off, is there, if 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 you didn't do that at all, is there a possibility that ultimately that gas is going to catch fire and set the landfill on fire?
If we didn't collect the gas, we wouldn't be able to operate a landfill in Washington State.
You know, the landfill is is a it's unique, it's a fun operation. I almost had to say this because I don't want to undate you guys, but if if a person has a super interest in seeing how it operates, they've been very open to uh, taking you on a tour and showing you uh, how it how it works up there. And I would, if you have that interest, I'd encourage you to contact them and do it. It it's interesting operation to see everything they go through to keep us operating.
Yeah, we get quite a few tour requests up there and it's always fun to talk with people about it and.
Plus, you usually get to see the wild horses, so.
You do, you do. I really do.
And our staff, our staff does a great job of running that place.
Yeah. Any other questions on ten? Okay, entertaining a motion.
I move approval of the bid award to Glacier Environmental Services.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the bid award to Glacier Environmental Services. Last opportunity. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. HHS, Gina. On your agenda, um, you have like two, what I would call a call two separate uh, groups of of contract things with HHS. Number eleven is the the Consolidated Homeless Grant. Twelve and thirteen are related to that one. So if those are kind of grouped together. And then fourteen is the uh, grant with the Department of Social and Health Services on um, the developmental disability program. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are related to item fourteen, just so you're aware. She'll be so once he talks about, we'll go through eleven and just remember twelve and thirteen are kind of related to are related to eleven. Okay.
Yes, thank you for that. Gina James, Health and Human Services. The first item on the agenda is our contract with Washington State Department of Commerce. This is called the Consolidated Homeless Grant. Um, this grant is a combination of state general funds and document recording fees that are collected locally, but um, we have to return a portion to the state. They then um, turn around and put that back into a grant, um, the Consolidated Homeless Grant to come back to counties. Counties get the sort of the first, a right of first refusal um, for these grants. Um, if counties um, don't want to participate, then the state will work with local nonprofit to allocate the funding. We've historically, we've been involved in this grant for a number of years. Um, and historically, it's been um, the allocations have been determined based on census data, percent in poverty, um, HIN eligible, um, a couple of different components to kind of as a formula determine our allocations. Uh, moving forward, it sounds like allocations will be based on spending, um, so that is kind of a change. Um, also, historically, the funding has been primarily HIN-specific. HIN is the Housing and Essential Needs Program. Um, this is a partnership program with the state. Um, HIN is a state um, program that helps individuals if they've been determined unable to work for a period of ninety days or more. Um, they may be eligible to be on HIN. HIN provides some essential need items as well as a housing component, and that's the the piece that comes in this contract is that housing piece. Um, individuals then are um, working with the state on if they're able to return to work or if they're looking at a permanent disability or what their future path is in that sense. Um, in terms of why they're unable to work. Um, and so we're involved in the housing component. His and as I mentioned, historically, this grant has been primarily um, centered around that HIN program and the funding has been specific to that HIN program. What we've seen the last couple of years is some additional funding um, coming through on this grant. Um, most recently, last biennium was eviction prevention funding, and this was an additional one hundred dollar document recording fee um, that was implemented in the state. Um, and then it then came back to us um, in the form of eviction prevention funding in this grant. Um, with that funding, we started working with the Community Mediation Center, um, and CAP as a partnership to um, administer that program. There's some additional funding included in this year's contract. As we know, it's um, eleven point seven million, which is the highest we've ever seen. Um, the legislature approved some additional funding that was put into this grant. Um, in some, a couple of different funding categories. What we have on the agenda today is allocating funding for what we have been doing um, in the past, which is primarily working with CAP, that HIN program funding. Um, and then the additional eviction prevention piece, that's partnership with CAP and the Community Mediation Center. So we have those contracts on today for with CAP and the Community Mediation Center for that piece. Um, what I would suggest is if we want, if we're looking at future allocations, we would work with the board, set up a workshop, talk about, you know, what we what we have, what the funding can be used for, kind of dive into those specifics of what um, what that looks like. And um, we have had a couple of inquiries coming in, and so we would, you know, suggest setting up a workshop to have those discussions about um, future allocations. And as I mentioned, what we have on the agenda today is um, primarily the HIN piece with the eviction prevention that we've um, been involved in in the past. I, that was long-winded, but there's lots of members of the public here, and so I wanted to make sure to just kind of give a full overview um, of this grant. So I'm gonna, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
You provided us a little history yesterday, for sample from July of two thousand nineteen through June of twenty-one. The award of three million, we spent roughly two and a half. Um, July twenty-one through the end of June twenty-three, we rewarded five. We spent roughly three million. It's um, you, you, we don't have a lot of leeway in what we can spend this on. The 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 state has a pretty well dictates how you how you spend it. Counties don't, you kind of have to follow their rules.
Yes.
Yeah. So when you see it's not all spent, it's it's a lot of times because we don't have projects that end up following all those rules. Twenty-three to twenty-five, we were awarded eight million. We spent a little over five. And this year, we were awarded almost twelve. And as you can see, we have right around five, just under six, that's looking at at committed. So that's always a, you wonder why that that keep keeps happening. Um, I am taking their word for it that they're changing how they look at allocating, why how it keeps increasing and what their the metrics are they're looking at for that to make it a little more uh, reasonable. Okay.
Gina, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but to Commissioner Dahl's uh, remarks. If if it was based on HIN, the HIN numbers, were our were our HIN numbers increasing at the same rate that we that the the allocation was increasing for that increase that we were getting every other year?
So.
Sense?
Yeah, and I'm not sure how it breaks down with the HIN. I know that that was one component of the formula. Um, and so, but the HIN, the HIN allocation, while that has increased over the last few years, it's been the additional other funding that has really made the overall contract increase um, as much as it has. The HIN portion hasn't increased at that same level, so it has a little bit, it has gone up a little bit, um, but not that's not been the driver for the total grant and being increased.
So with the eviction prevention being added.
Mm-hmm.
Um, take the 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 new allocation, if you will, that they've added to it and the HIN program. Do we know why it jumped so much if if we don't have any history of how much money we've allocated to the eviction prevention program previously? I mean, do we do we have an indication as to why it's jumped so much? If if the HIN numbers haven't grown and we've just added the eviction prevention program this year?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we know, do you have any indication as to why it's?
Why the grant?
Yeah.
Increased. There was additional funding approved through the legislature um, that has been included into this grant. So there was um, a document recording fee backfill. Um, there was a line item called inflation increase. And what we saw this year too was emergency housing funding. The state was allocating that funding directly themselves and they this year included it in our grant. So we've seen these additional funding lines that have been included in this grant, and that's been the primary reason we saw such a large increase in our grant.
Go ahead, Ron.
I I think from a payer standpoint and all of us out here paying these bills, we need to be perfectly clear that our state representatives are already telling us that they're short in the state budget. And then we see things like this. So we're robbing Peter Peter to pay Paul and then looking for the taxpayers to fill in the void. And so here's thirteen million dollars. So Gina, can you give us a context of Callis County relative to the big picture for the states? There's got to be probably a close five hundred million or some tremendous amount from a state level when we consider our small population relative. So that gives us a context when our state representatives tell us they're coming to get more money from us because their budget isn't balanced. And then we look at this. So I'm just being perfectly clear, it's taking and distribution differently in the state and then crying that they don't have enough money in other sources. Okay, I'm, I'll let you talk.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'd, I think I've said this before. I was, I was surprised with, you know, hearing the budget concerns with the state myself and then seeing such a large increase here. Um, and I know that, you know, it wasn't just our county, it was all counties who received this grant, got these additional lines as approved by the legislature. And so, yes, if you, um, I would encourage you to talk to your legislators if you want to have them advocate for that.
Yeah, we do. And I can, um, I can tell you stats I've seen over the past decade, Washington State has spent five billion dollars on homelessness, probably eighty percent of that in the last two budgets. So eighty percent of that, five billion over the last two budgets, which would be four years, I guess, or eight years, whatever that is. So it's a, it's a chunk of money. If you're looking for kind of a statewide number, that's that's probably a good place to start.
Right, and we're seeing this is that, yes, that we're getting these grants, the money we've paid coming back, and at the same time, our we get the discussion about we got to pay more money for our schools because they're not getting fully funded. So it's again our representation, and as we speak to our local representatives, they're helpless in the state picture because of the monopoly of rule out of the Puget Sound.
I think part of the increase in this number was monies that were going to other municipalities locally, or all of a sudden, instead of the state sending it directly to them, they sent it here to the county. So part of that was a, a big chunk of that increase.
Good morning. I have a clarifying question. Uh, the money that we've got in previous years, like the last couple of years. Uh, you mentioned that CAP and the Mediation Center got a portion of it. It's my understanding there were other organizations like the Emergency Support Shelter, Family Promise and all that. So did they also receive funds and could they receive funds going forward?
Yes, we did um, utilize some of this grant funding for some of our agencies that serve as coordinated entry access points, which would be um, Community House, Family Health Center, and Emergency Support Shelter. And then we also utilized some funds um, with um, Hazwa for Phoenix House, Habitat for Humanity, and Family Promise. So we did utilize a small portion of that to help with some of those contracts that we have. Um, and they, I would plan to utilize this grant again for our coordinated entry access points um, and potentially others, and that would be a future conversation with our Board of Commissioners, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, fellows. Uh, Commissioners, I mean. Um, so just a quick little bit of math. So all these things add up to twenty-one million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, and that, and apples and oranges kind of thing, you know, over at uh, the port. You know, they got this railroad grant, that's federal money, though, there's nothing to do with this, but I'm just saying numbers. That's forty-two million. And so that's sixty-three million dollars in in government money that's around here like that. Uh, just, just imagine if that was just in our pockets, right? We'd almost be all a millionaire, right? Just a county population, just an observation. Um, how many people are helped for this? How many people are helped for this twenty-one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars? How many people do we help with that amount of money? And are any of them veterans? The veterans is different, I know, but
Yeah, I could look at that.
Can you stack those, you know, like a veteran could get double dipped here somehow? I mean, I'm not complaining, I wish they would. But let's just go back to my question. How many people are helped for this twenty-one million, seven hundred and seventy-six?
Where are we getting the twenty-one million?
I added up all the numbers off of there.
Oh, well, the, the two numbers you want to see, there's eleven million seven for the homeless deal. And then there's three million for the disability program. The programs under that come out of those two funds.
Oh, okay.
They're not in addition.
So what number does that bring us down to?
Well, eleven, seven on the one we're talking about.
About fifteen million then, right?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
So fifteen million. So how many people are we helping with that amount of money?
I'm, right. I could, I could hear flow. Yes, we don't use all of it. Historically, we've not used all of it. And I'm still not sure where the fifteen million comes from. This grant is eleven point seven million.
Does the three for the disability program come out of that eleven too?
No.
It's a separate thing. That's where, that's where he's getting the fifteen.
Okay. Yeah, so we just have the eleven point seven million. And then we have two past contracts passing those funds down. And which is close to half, just under half, I think, of the grant funding. So last biennium, the last two years, the program served about three hundred and fifty-three clients in the program and helped over two hundred of those to move into housing to be stably housed and so.
So what, what kind of stable housing, what do you consider that? Is that like you go from something like a hopeless village over to another subsidized housing?
So for this, with the rapid rehousing piece, it, it could be someone currently staying in emergency shelter that transitioned to the rapid rehousing program. They move into housing. This, some of these funds would pay for their rent while they're working on their ability to return to work or completing other things. And they stay in the program if they're, if it's the HIN program, as long as they're HIN eligible and meeting their requirements for the HIN program. They can stay eligible for the rent assistance component of that. They exit, so in the last biennium, we had ninety-six of those households exit to permanent housing. What that means is that they've gotten to a point where they are able to maintain their housing independently. That does sometimes mean that they transition to like a longer term housing voucher, for example. But sometimes it is also just independent rental on your own with no housing subsidy connected. So, and that's the goal is to get to that point of exiting to a permanent destination.
Yeah, that, you know, Tim, I don't, I don't think anybody up here disagrees. We don't, I'm not, I'm not a fan of the way Washington, our state approaches this, approaches the homelessness. When you look over when we're, when we're reported from twenty-three to twenty-four is the third highest growth in homeless. And we're, we're number one of all states in what they call chronic homeless, then the way we do things is broken. The frustrating thing with this, we, we, we take this grant because it gives us a little bit of control to see what comes in and, and does on it. But the frustrating thing is we keep pouring money, doing the same crap that doesn't work. And that's my frustration with it. And I think that's your frustration with it too. And, and, and that's one of the things we need to work with legislature on and get some of that fixed. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Luis Monzal and I serve as the Board President of the Community Mediation Center here in Calhoun County. So first of all, I want to thank you gentlemen for allowing me to speak here today. I want to share a statement on support, of support, on behalf of myself, our Executive Director Laura Height and our staff members who are here with me today. You'll also be receiving this statement in writing, if you haven't received it already, by email. But I felt it was important to bring this forward in person as well. The Community Mediation Center strongly supports Calhoun County's acceptance of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven Department of Commerce Consolidated Homeless Grant Funds. Obviously to be administered by the local Department of Health and Human Services. As a sub-grantee of this program for the past two years, the Community Mediation Center has seen firsthand the immediate and positive impact these funds have had on the residents here in Calhoun County. During the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five biennium, the Community Mediation Center assisted more than six hundred and eighty-six households who are facing eviction. Staff worked directly with families and landlords through conflict coaching, conciliation, mediation, referrals to local resources and by helping create repayment plans so that people could remain in their homes. Many of these households also received rental assistance through our partner, Lower Columbia CAP, as was mentioned earlier. Others turned to the Community Mediation Center in moments of real vulnerability. After losing employment, facing serious health challenges, enduring family hardships or just struggling with the cost, with the, the rising cost. Without this grant funding, many families, the same people who are, are neighbors, coworkers and just fellow community members might not have had the means to maintain stable housing. So on behalf of the Community Mediation Center, staff, board and the Board of Directors, volunteers and all our service partners, I respectfully encourage you all to approve acceptance of these funds. Doing so ensures that organizations like ours can continue to serve, support and educate families at risk of losing their homes and provide real hope for a brighter future for some, for a lot of these folks here in town. So with that, I just want to thank you gentlemen for your leadership and for your time today.
Thank you. Just a couple of other comments from yesterday, and I saw the email today and I think we can get there. We talked about, and, and it really comes from prior life in the industry I worked in. We were used to having audits, independent audits of things. I was in the financial field, so yearly basis, you bring in and outside, somebody not affiliated with you and independently audit your books and make sure that we agreed with, with them. And I think that, that makes sense. And we talked about that yesterday of the possibility of doing that with these programs. And I'll reiterate what I reiterate, again, it's not a, not a slam or anything on our staff at HHS. I think they do a great job, but independent audits give you two things. Number one, they give you somebody that, that has no relationships. And number two, they give you somebody that's totally focused on one, one item. They're not dealing with multiple things. So we're, we're gonna work down that path and see if we can't get there and, and the hope would be to randomly select one or two a year to have them independently audited and just make sure that the money that we're taking out of your wallet at least is being handled how it's supposed to be handled. Did I miss anything from that conversation yesterday? Okay. Marsha, go ahead.
Good morning. I, I just want to say after Luis got up and spoke, the key word in what he said that stuck out in my mind as a staff person who has talked to many of these struggling families who responsibly are working and providing for their families, mothers and fathers who are trying to make ends meet and they fall through hard times because of a car broke down, a medical emergency, whatever. The key word is educating. And that's what we pride ourselves in, to educate not only the tenants but the landlords on how to communicate and be responsible with that. The money that they do receive to pay their rent and use other resources in the community to you, to get their groceries or the help they need because they're going through a rough time. And they fall behind one month, maybe two months, but they just need that little helping hand to get them back on solid ground to continue to take care of their families. They don't want to use assistance. That's a big difference in the people that call who aren't willing to work, who aren't willing to do the responsible thing and fall far beyond a month or two being late in rent. They're not communicating with their landlord. So we, we deal with a lot of different people calling the Community Mediation Center. So once again, it's all about educating them so that they don't fall into that same place again. Thanks.
Gina, I have a quick question. With regards to Luis's numbers that he spoke of, those are obviously not included in the numbers that you gave us on this sheet, correct?
Yes, so some, the numbers on the sheet from like the six eighty-six, that's from the Mediation Center. They came and presented back in May and shared some of that information. That's where that came from.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay. So something I've just gathered here is that, you know, basically this money would stay here whether you guys do anything about it or not, the state's gonna give it to these guys. And I'm not arguing against that exactly. What I, what I see here is that we're kind of like taking on the administration of all this.
Right.
Whereas the state is gonna do it anyway. And so wouldn't your job be a lot easier if you weren't trying to keep track of all this other money here? I mean, right? It's, it's actually in a way, we get this grant, but it costs us money at the same time. And the money wouldn't go away. Money wouldn't go away, right?
We, we can recoup some of the expenses of administration, but, but I think the bigger thing, Tim, that, that I see and, and see may can speak for themselves is it gives us the opportunity to have these meetings. You can talk about it. If we don't do it and the state just automatically gives it out, you never know where it goes. You never have a chance to, to see it. So I'm willing to run it through here, even though I don't agree with a lot of the, the parameters the state sets and, and the expectations the state has, just so that you have the opportunity to come up and, and, and can voice an opinion on it. If that makes sense.
Sure does, but you know, I, I didn't say this before, but Gina is like a, a gold brick for us. You know what I mean? She does so much.
I got you.
And, you know, alleviate the workload a little bit, you know. She could do a better job at other stuff, maybe, I don't know. Hard to imagine her doing a better job. She's like very valuable to us and no knock on you on any of this, I'm saying.
Tim, I see your point to what you're saying and, and to Chairman Doll's point. I think the three of us would agree that we would rather have control of that money and have control in our own backyard. And what it allows us to do is to develop a relationship with those service providers that otherwise we probably wouldn't have if they just got it directly from the state. And then we would have, we wouldn't have a relationship with them. And one of the points that Ron made about one of the previous contracts with the attorneys is how do we know that they're, that they are in line with our values? So I, I think having that relationship with these different service providers, we can, we can express what our values are and work with them on, on ensuring the best way that we can with those funds being administered, that we're working together to hopefully accomplish something that we both can agree on. Whereas if we don't have that say, the state's gonna do it without us and then we're not even involved in that, in that, you know, administration of those funds, if you will.
Well, I guess I, I want to elaborate on this just a little bit. And that is, right now, you see on there roughly a little less than half is direct pass-through money to organizations. The state could do that real easily and, and bypass us. If we did not take this money, I guess, Gina, do you have any idea who would get it to administer it?
I'm, I'm guessing the state would probably reach out to CAP as the, like the HIN provider. They would likely reach out to them to inquire if they were interested in it.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is do we want to be able to do this right here? Be able to sit and talk about where and when that money's spent? Or just pass it off to another agency? That would be the ultimate choice for us to make sitting here today.
Well, and I also think that we can all probably come up with service providers in our area in the past who were probably not the best stewards of the money that they were given. And we, as the previous Board of Commissioners would have had a say in whether or not they were going to continue to give that money to someone who was not being a good steward of that money. If we're not involved in that process, that money's gonna get spent and they're gonna continue to get it. And one of the things that has been a common thread that everybody has come up here is we want the best value for that taxpayer's money that we can get and not just have that money willy-nilly handed out, right? So not, in, in a lot of ways, accepting that grant and, and us having control, if you will, over who gets it. And we can, we can have strings attached and we can have communications and establish relationships with those service providers to me is invaluable because I don't want the state just giving money to whoever they want continually because they're gonna continue to take money out of our pockets. At least this way, we have oversight with what, how that money is gonna be distributed.
Especially, especially if we can add some audit functions to it.
Right.
Hello?
Well, I definitely agree with all of you have said for sure. We have to have oversight with what is spent. With that being in mind, I'd like to bring up a subject that I've brought up with Gina several different times.
Is it related to this homeless grant? Because I need to get this.
Yes, it is, and I'll try to make it short if I can.
Okay.
I, as you all know, I'm from a family of educators and I'm pro education. It is at the basic and the foundation, I think, I believe, of our homeless. And right now, the state is telling the schools exactly what to teach them. And I feel that the county needs to have a liaison with the schools. Our biggest problem, I feel, with our homeless is that they have a lack of marketable skills. If we can address that, I think a lot of, a percentage, a huge percentage of our homeless would be able to go into these programs more readily and succeed and eventually be a, a positive in our, to our society. But we don't have any oversight over the schools and what are being taught. I really, really hope that you guys, somehow we can have a liaison between the county because, what they're being taught as a marketable skill, how they get to a marketable skill and, and let the schools know that, you know, there are avenues that we're prepared to meet them partway. If they have the kids, if they can get the kids to certain, certain standards. I mean, they think they are, but they don't, they aren't addressing budgeting. They aren't addressing the everyday life skills. They're more into, oh, you gotta go to college. A lot of the kids aren't gonna be there. But they need basic life skills and they're not doing it. And we aren't, as a county, we have absolutely no connection with our schools. And I really feel that, so that's something that needs to be addressed very much so. Thank you.
Something to tag on what Marsha was talking about, and I, I, I agree with it. And I, and I'm gonna read you a little something. This is an article done by a fellow by the name of Kevin Dahlgren. He has a history of working in this arena. And, and the title of his article, don't get tied up in this so much, but I want to read this one little story. The title of this article is "The Rise of Conservatism Among the Homeless Population." And he's, he's in, and I'll just briefly read this to you because I think it's interesting and it's, it's an area where I think we've, we, we want to help, I think we're, we're in enabling mode. I, I just believe that. And I think this kind of points it out. In early two thousand twenty-four, I was standing under Hawthorne Bridge, ten feet from the Willamette River in Portland, Oregon, interviewing a homeless man. His arms were covered in crude tattoos and I could tell he had been to prison. He served seven years and upon release was sent to the streets. He struggles with addiction, has tried a methadone program twice, has been to multiple homeless shelters. He knows the homeless service system well and told me the, the pantries he frequents and the best places to obtain tents, tarps and sleeping bags. He said he gets new needles. bags. He said he gets new needles from harm reduction workers once a week who dropped him off at his camp. He brought up the presidential race, and I was surprised to learn he was of his strong support for Donald Trump. He then showed me his MAGA hat. Despite his willingness to accept a significant amount of help from social service type programs, he shared that he has never done so comfortably. He felt like he is being enabled because he was never allowed to be self-sufficient. He asked about recovery programs, employment, and even volunteer programs, but was always redirected. His interview inspired me to start directly asking the homeless about whether they felt they were being empowered or enabled, and if they considered themselves liberal or conservative. And I could go through numerous stories of people saying basically the same thing. And I, I've talked, we've talked about this before. We're here to help people. We're not here to enable people. We've gotten to the point, and I've described it as, we somewhat treat them like hospice patients. We, we just feed them along the line till they're dead. And I just think that's, that, that's cruel, and that's, that's disrespectful of what they can be. And, and I've, when you see people themselves sitting on the street saying, well, I want to get help, but they just keep giving me other stuff. And so that's a, it's a fine line for me. And we talked yesterday, when other projects come in, we take a look at that. We realize the state wants us to do certain things, but we need to try and tweak it. So we're actually doing something that, that gets them out of the situation there. And instead of just maintaining the lifestyle that they've gotten used to enough. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. Yes, my name is Mike Haas, and I'm on the council school board, and I'm also on the Board of Directors for Youth and Family Link. And working with those folks has given me some perspective on, on the homeless situation in our community. And I, I'm speaking in favor of the county accepting these monies. And I'm particularly excited to hear of the potential of workshops with some providers here locally. Our community does so much already for, for the, the homeless in our, in our area. And I'll, I'll share one program that I'm familiar with, being on the council school board, is called the Family, Community, and Resource Center at, at, at the council school district. This was started four years ago with a modest investment. And there's over 250 kids in our school system that are considered homeless. And our population's 5,000. So that's like 2 and 1/2 percent, or maybe it's 5%. At any rate, there's a lot of kids and families in need. And this program has worked with these kids. And every year, there's roughly a dozen of them that graduate. And three out of four years, every one of those kids got a diploma. So to, to the remarks earlier, I'm not saying a diploma guarantees employment, but I'm saying it's sure a step in the right direction. So, and a lot of these, the families of these kids have found employment because of their relationship. So I think there's all sorts of community providers that are doing really great work. And, and I encourage you to look at, at, at monies that go to those types of providers as an investment. And as, as an engineer by trade, look for the return on investment. Work with folks who are demonstrating that they can help homeless kids and families get their, their feet back under the ground. Thank you. And also, thank you for the snicker.
Thank Commissioner Farrell. I'm familiar with the program, and I applaud you guys on it. And I, we can point out, I, I don't want to, I, I sound here, and I, I sound a lot of caution, but I can point out to you places I think do a great job. Family Promise right across the road over here. I think they do wonderful, wonderful work with the families. Faithful Servants over here with men coming out of jail and getting them squared and putting them to work and stuff do, do great work. Big fan of Habitat, helping people get into homes. So I think we, I think the gentleman's right. We have a lot of programs out there. Our job is to try and discern that the, these monies go to these programs that we actually see helping. And, and that's a big task, but it's not one we can shirk from. Any other questions on this? I'd, I'd leave it up to your guys' pleasure, but I don't know if you're comfortable, since the first three are all related. If you want to group those, I'm okay with it. But if there's concerns in your audience, or you want to talk to them individual, we'll do that. But if there's not, I'd just soon, see if we could group 11, 12, 13, and then move on to the disability?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion, then?
Remove approval of the Health and Human Services Contracts 11, 12, and 13, as listed on the program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the contract, including 11, 12, and 13. Last chance for questions, comments, anything? Let me check. I don't, you don't see any hands or anything? Okay. Call for vote. Those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Gina, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you.
Okay, so the next few items. Item 14 is our state contract with Washington State Department of Social and Health Services for Developmental Disabilities Program Funding. Items 15, 16, and 17 are pass-through contracts with local providers. So this contract provides funding for specific services related to developmental disabilities. So it provides for child development services, just services for children, birth to age three. We work with the Progress Center for those services as our only neurodevelopment center in the county. It also provides funding for adult employment and day programs. The day programs help connect individuals to activities in the community that they are interested in and enjoy, and hopefully can go and do on their own as a quality of life component. The Adult Employment Program provides funding to help individuals with disabilities to obtain and maintain employment in the community. I mentioned this, I think, yesterday. We have about 155 individuals in the adult program. And we have, we've seen a change in this the last couple of years, but it used to be that individuals had to pick either the employment program or the day program. They can now be in both programs simultaneously. So we've seen individuals choosing to do that. The individuals in the employment program were hovering around 84% employed, which is great. So they're working in the community just like you or I, minimum wage or better, and working at places all across the spectrum from large, you know, peace health employs individuals. And we have small mom and pops places that employ individuals. About 53 businesses in our community that have hired individuals in this program. So I'll stop there. But, so as I mentioned, the state contract, we have as the item first, the pass-through contracts we have today on the agenda are with LifeWorks, Compass Career Solutions, and the Progress Center. We have two additional providers that we work with that will come to a future meeting, Goodwill and Employers Overload. So those will come next week or the week after.
The top two, LifeWorks and Compass, those are older kids.
Those are the adult programs.
Progress Center is the.
Child Development Services.
The three.
Yep. Yep. And the allocation amounts, just to clarify, the Child Development Services, we've had the same allocation from the state for that particular piece for a number of years. And so we just pass that right down to the Progress Center. With our adult employment programs, they vary depending on who, how many clients the agencies are working with. And so.
And the clients, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they kind of have, they get registered with the state?
Mm-hmm.
And that's how the state knows how many we have and, and how they base their funding on.
Right. They, yeah, they're eligible for developmental disability services through the state. And then when they're going through that process and they, you know, would like to work or be in the employment program or be in a day program, they pick which provider they want to work with. And that's how they get referred out to those providers. And, and that's how we allocate our funding is based on the clients that are being served by the providers.
Gina, do we typically exhaust the funds in this contract every year?
We don't. We, let's see. I had that written down somewhere. Last year, last year, our contract was about 2.5 million, and we spent around 2 million. It really just depends on the service level. There's, each individual in the program is approved for a number of service hours. It can go, the providers can go up to those hours. They don't always. Sometimes it's below the maximum hours that they can do for a variety of reasons. So it does vary. We don't historically spend every penny, but a little bit closer than some other programs.
Commissioner Ritter brings out a good point. Is, on most, any of these contracts, state doesn't send us this money.
Right.
We don't get a check for, for $3 million. They say you have this available to send us receipts, and we'll, we'll, we'll reimburse you for up to this dollar amount. So
Yes.
In my old world, you'd call it type of line, line of credit type thing, but.
Yes, it's an up to amount, and it's all cost reimbursement model.
So looking at these pass-through contracts, it's roughly 2/3 of the allocation. Is that typical, what we've seen in the past, is roughly 2/3 is pass-through, and then there's a third of it that is available for people who come and ask for?
Yeah, we have two more contracts that will be coming, so we'll see some additional funding being allocated there. So it will be a little bit more. We have, we have some administrative costs, and so we keep a portion as well. It's up to 10% that we can keep for our cost working on the contracts.
Good.
Most, most of it is allocated out. And then we do keep a small buffer. And we've had this come up in the past where if clients move between providers, or they have an increase in hours, or a decrease in hours, and things change with the providers, we might look, we might come back and allocate additional funding depending on that movement of clients. So we keep a little bit of a buffer for that reason as well, that we don't allocate.
And we treat them the same way that the state treats us, right? And we're telling LifeWorks, you have up to 1,547,000. You send us receipts. If they don't add up to 1,547,000, we don't cut you a check at the end of the deal to make the difference. They just get what they get.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is, this program as a whole, all these different providers, this, to me, is a little bit different than the homeless situation, because these are people who are in the situation that they're in of no fault of their own. And it's really difficult to quantify what I would call a return on investment that we typically like to look at whenever we're funding programs. I have, I have a couple of family members who have Down Syndrome. One of them participates in a program similar to this. And being an employer who has employed several of these people through this program, and being a patron to businesses who employ these types of people, I would say that it's a program that it makes a difference in our society. And it makes a difference for our business owners and for our patrons, because I know that whenever we had the opportunity to hire somebody like that, we did. And it actually changed the, I don't want to say it changed the culture of our business, but it changed the environment, having them working there alongside of us. And they're working. They're doing a job. They're not, they don't want anything for free. They're actually there, uh, working and contributing. And it definitely, it made the environment better in our workplace. And I know that myself as a patron, if I know that there are employers in our community that employ these people, I want to patron those people, those businesses first. And so those are, those are intangible benefits that programs like this bring to our community that we really can't quantify. But there is a definite benefit to having programs like this in our community.
Yeah, absolutely. And on that note, October's National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So if you're interested in more information, keep an eye out on our Facebook. We'll be posting lots of information about that.
You mentioned the environment. So a key question is that we're in a new administrative and social environment where we're working on merit-based responsibility and respect. I hope that the word is out that we don't manage by DEI anymore, and that these, the state has freed up those rules. Is that, are we still working under the old program of encouraging good, working people to be able to do their job and be rewarded on merit and results?
I, I can't speak, speak to the state. I can speak to the county. I, I think we're pretty much on merit. We're on merit. All right?
Well, I'm just, and the environment for all these programs and the people.
Oh, you're talking about these programs that get the money?
Correct. It's paying for, in one way or another. But we're managing those. And again, it's made a big difference in a lot of businesses when they say, now we are hiring and working as a, as a group under merit, responsibility, and respect, rather than the cloud of DEI over us.
Well, I, I agree with that, with that point, Ron. In this, in this situation with these people in particular, I know that the, the service providers work really hard to place the people in an environment where they can be successful and where they can contribute, based on the merits that they are bringing to the table. So I, I do really like that about the program. But ultimately, to your point, it's gonna be up to the employer to make sure that they're employing people that are employed based on qualifications and based on their merit, not just based on the color of their skin or whatever else DEI would require of them.
Right. But if that direction were coming from some of our social levels at the state level, there would be a different perception in, in certain instances. Thank you.
Other questions on this? Once again, I would say if you're, you're comfortable and you want to group those, I don't have a problem with it. Okay?
And I would move approval of 12, 13, 14, no, excuse me, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Items on the con, on the agenda, contract with Washington State Department of Social and Health Services to provide funding for the Departmental Disability Program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items 14, 15, 16, and 17. Last chance for comments? Seeing no hands? No hands? Okay. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Gina, thank you. Wonderful job, as always. We appreciate it. Yeah. Uh, before we get into customer or public comments, just a quick, couple things. October 7th, we have Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board in at 10 o'clock. It's a Tuesday, October 7th, Tuesday, October 24th. We have Department Ecology. Tuesday, October 21st, two things on the 21st. At 11 o'clock, Gina will be here again with the, I'm assuming you'll be presenting this one, the Local Homeless Housing Plan? Yeah. And we had a question on if you can get that before time. Yes, she can make that available to before time so you can review it before we get here. Okay? As your friend will remind you of how screwed up your state is, discovery, Discover Pass fees will go from $30 to $45 on the 1st of October. And that's, there'll be a long line of few increases, I'm sure. With that, we'll turn it over to you. It's open for public comment, whatever we have. Yes, sir?
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to participate and to speak with you today. My name is Jordan Wisdom. I am with Community House on Broadway. And on behalf of our Board of Directors and our Executive Director, Frank Morrison, we want to thank this board for its historical support of Community House on Broadway and us as a service provider in the community and the homeless continuum of care, specifically, most recently, to this board and Commissioner Doll for support of recent projects, including Best Place. And then, uh, thank you for today for accepting the Consolidated Homeless Grant. With that being said, as this board is likely very aware, Community House on Broadway is, lives its mission out through an absence-based program, accountability, and ultimately, a mission of recovery for folks experiencing homelessness. for folks experiencing homelessness, families, medically fragile and youth experiencing homelessness as well. Knowing that the, um, upcoming Consolidated Homeless Grant has increased its funding, we would like to, if, um, I have permission from you, hand deliver a letter to each of you, with some funding concepts and ideas. We look forward to as an agency, as a service provider, to engaging, um, in the public process of workshops to identify appropriate uses, um, of those state allocated funds and participating in the public process for that. But with your permission, can I hand deliver those to you?
Yeah, you're welcome to, to give that to us. Uh, I just, I think you probably know everything you run through HHS and Gina, yeah, as you work through the projects. But, but yeah, thank you.
Yes, and thank you, um, we will continue to be in close collaboration with HHS and Gina. We did want to hand deliver this, um, to you guys today to just open up, start kind of the conversation and open up those lines of communication. So thank you for your time today and thank you for your support, um, of the community, um, especially those in our, in our local constituency experiencing homelessness and recovery.
Yeah. I totally appreciate you, you coming up. I just have a, a, look at it a little bit different, I'm not sure homeless is an experience. You're either homeless or you're not, not homeless. And I'd just rather get them from homeless to, to homeless. It's a situation, uh, and I think if we, uh, I don't know, I, I'm just very careful. I think we, we've just, we've set up this new standard of living that just, and, and we're just okay with leaving them there. And I, and I, it's not, I don't see it as an experience, I just see it as a situation that people need to at least be educated and given the opportunity to get out of, instead of just, uh, maintaining. And we, and I, I'm not digging on Community House, I'm just kind of opining a little bit. We have a tendency, we like to keep it there because funds keep rolling in for it and it becomes a, a money pit. Well, I don't care about the funds, what I care about is those people sitting in that situation and that we move them from that situation to a productive situation. And most of the times what you'll find, at least the people that I, I know that have made that transition, they're much, much happier and, and they appreciate the opportunity to get there. They don't want to be held, held back. So I just always caution, let's not hold them, let's not just assume that this is where they're going to live. Let's expect more and, and move them and help them move, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a comment, but really a kind of a question as far as that verbiage of homelessness and, uh, the unhoused, because I found as a community liaison calling around at some of the schools and talking to other nonprofits dealing with that population, they would clarify to me, we're representing the unhoused in the school. Or they would make that clear, that, that those families who are responsible and trying to do the right thing to get out of their situation preferred to be called the unhoused, not, and I think there was more to it than that, but not homeless. Because they felt like they didn't want to be just bunched up altogether. There's some distinguishing factors that they wanted people to consider. So I got a little educated, somebody else might know a little bit more about that, um, difference that could explain it a little bit, um, to us. But I just found that very interesting to talk to those.
Well, don't you think at times, sometimes it's just human nature, you know? I think most people have, want to be better off, that sometimes they just don't know the steps to, to get there. They don't want to be classified as, I'm this and I'm never going to be anything different than that. And I think it's shame on us if we look at them like that, that they'll never be different. Cause I, I, I just, I have a lot more faith in humanity that they can rise above those, those, those things and do that. So I think that's a little bit where that comes from, would be my guess.
But I think it's important, it really spoke to me, is we cannot group and just place a label on all of the people like that and assume that they're all the same. That, that is a huge mistake and I've even been offended when I've listened to people talk about the homeless in that way, like they're just one big population that are irresponsible, don't want help. Yes, there are those that don't want help and they refuse to improve their life and, and contribute back to the community. But there's a great many of them that are doing everything they can. And we always like to talk to those families and people, to commend them and encourage them and do all we can to help them along.
Well, it's just like that little story I wrote about, uh, the gentleman interviewed down in Portland. He's trying to find a way out and they keep pushing him back. And, and that's what I don't want to do.
That's what we don't want to do either. Thank you.
Marsha, I, I appreciate your comments, uh, because words do mean things. And to give you an example of, of what, that words mean things, uh, when you look at the immigration situation we have in our, in our country, and this directly relates to your comment, um, we use the word immigrant to illegal aliens and we use the word immigration and we have to treat these immigrants with due process. And a, as a direct descendant of an immigrant, um, if you're an immigrant, you've gone through the ports of entry correctly, you've got the, you've filed the, the correct paperwork, you've done what you need to be, to do to be called an immigrant. Somebody who enters the country illegally is not an immigrant, it's an illegal alien. So words mean things and to your point, you're, you're correct, we shouldn't lump everybody into that situation, into the, the same word, because people are homeless for different reasons and different situ, you know, different situations that they're facing in life. But one of the things that I think we need to address, and this, this gentleman who just stood up, um, said it, and that is that with the increase in funding, we have some budget ideas. And to me, that is the elephant in the room that needs to be addressed. The system, the way that the system is designed, there is no incentive to take somebody out of it. The incentive is to continue the, the, the status quo, because if we get people off the streets, what is my nonprofit going to do? And everybody is fighting for the same money, right? So I, I really think that, that us accepting that grant and us being able to play an active role in helping these nonprofits accomplish, uh, a goal. And, and that's one of the reasons why we ask for accountability and we want to know how many people you're helping. And, and because the reality is, the system is set up to where if, just like immigration, if we solve the immigration problem, there's no more leverage when it comes to campaign time. There's no more leverage when we're talking about what needs to be fixed. So truly, to address the, the homeless problem, what we have to do is address the system and the way that the funds are allocated and given to these, to these different organizations, because there really is no incentive to solve the problem. And that's why I think it's important that, that the B O C C, we are the ones responsible for allocating those funds. So we can establish a relationship with the service providers within our community and ensure that, that we're, we're getting what we, what we at least desire for the money that we're allocating to these service providers.
Well, Steve, that was so good, I don't need to make a comment. But I did, Rick, I want to very much, um, commend you on your attitude on what we should be trying to do here. And Steve, you, you verified that. As I was sitting here thinking about all these programs, I was trying to figure out where any of those situations would fit into our bigger behavioral health, um, study that we're doing and, and working with these people, these private people who want to come into the community. So I'm trying to figure out, okay, if we got these, these different groups of people that need help, how do they or how could they fit into the total behavioral health situation? And, and with the goal of moving them on to some kind of a, a better improvement in their lifestyle. So I very much appreciate the attitude. And Mr. Steve in the middle, you didn't make a comment, but I know you feel the same way. So we appreciate everything you guys are doing, thank you.
Just as a personal experience, I have a homeless person that I mentor personally, that stays on some property that I have. And my finding is that almost every person that is homeless or has behavioral problems needs a personal mentor just to talk to and help them think through the situation that they're in. This person that I have, uh, stays on some property. I meet with him regularly and say, hey, you're staying on my property for free. I need you to at least contribute to make it worthwhile. And cleaning up, doing certain things, and it's very interesting. He has trouble categorizing his day and his time and finding the incentive to go do it. But I can sit down with him or I can work with him and he'll, he's just tickled pink. He says, I love working with you. So that's part of it, we have all this money, but we need personal involvement of people that are willing to really stick their nose in and work with people.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Ron, and I know a few people that do that and God bless you guys for doing that.
So, so, and it works.
When, when are you taking off, Mr. Shea?
It's coming right up.
Coming right up?
Yeah. Uh, my arthritis is hurting already, you know what I mean? It's only barely getting cold and it's like I gotta have five jackets up. Well, anyway, I'm going to change the subject here a little bit.
Okay.
Going to get off the homeless thing and talk about the Constitution for a minute, especially the First Amendment. Now, um, you know, not long ago, you know, our side, we were howling in here like, uh, wild wolves, you know what I mean? We, because we were being censored. We saw, and probably know people, lost their jobs because they said something or wouldn't do a certain thing. And, um, so, uh, the example is a couple of weeks ago, we've had another tragedy happen and then somebody from the other side spouted off, you know? And you know what I'm talking about, Jim Hill, right? His comments. Now, um, uh, whether you like Jim Hill's comments or not, there's nothing there that wasn't, wasn't within the First Amendment. He had his right to say whatever he wants and I, and you guys have that right. We should, but we already know we don't, right? We already know we're being censored in a lot of ways and, um, uh, even now, you know? And so I, I, I would just encourage everybody to think before jumping in there and saying, off with his head. Do you know what I mean? Guy should lose his job because he spoke up about something. He didn't say anything that wasn't protected by, wasn't free speech. You might not like it, but that's the problem with those things sometimes, that's got two edges on that blade, you know? And sometimes it hurts. But the fact is, is we got to be really cautious about, um, running to the point of saying, of labeling something as hate speech or, or in those, use those terms and try to call for some, some ramification for saying something that you really should be able to say, whether we like it or not, you know? And that's pretty much my comment about that. I'd just say, just be really cautious about what we're thinking, because the same, same things that we were complaining about and now we're calling it the other way. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm as guilty as that as anybody. And I'm just saying, sometimes you just got to come to terms with some of these things. Thanks.
Yeah. Give me a little, I, I totally agree with you, I, he has a right to, to say. I think sometimes, uh, like I sit in a, you guys put me in a position, I, I feel like I can't sit up here and just spew hatred to everybody in here, that wouldn't be right. There's a certain decorum that I expected myself and you expected me sitting in this position. While I have the right to say it, I don't have the right to be free of consequences from saying it if I do it in the wrong thing. And, and I think Jim is experienced, not, Jim can come in here and talk anytime, we, we would not turn him away. He could, he could do that just fine. And, and I may handle that, uh, different than some others have. But I agree with you that, that nobody should be, um, restricted from exercising their, their free speech. But, but I also believe that when you, in, when you accept some responsibility, you have to accept consequences if you, uh, abuse that responsibility. And I think that's kind of where he finds himself a little bit, as far as being on counsel.
Well, if I can take just a second, Ron?
Sure.
I think that there's only two instances where language is not legal. If I threaten your life, that's wrong. And if I incite a riot, that's wrong. Otherwise, I don't agree that there should be any words that I can't say. I don't believe in hate speech unless it crosses that boundary into inciting illegal action or threatening somebody's life. And barring those two things, I think you ought to be able to say any darn thing you want to say. Now, within reason, I mean, I don't want you to get up on a pulpit and start trying to have a revival meeting in here, but at the same time, I think you should be able to speak your piece, state your position, justify it if you feel the need and, and walk away, let everybody know how you feel about something. Should be that way across this country. It should be that way, especially in colleges, for people to challenge ideas and speak freely and be able to express new ideas that maybe somebody hasn't thought of and inspire that conversation and have creative thinking. It's happening at the college level especially, those are our future leaders of tomorrow. And, and I don't want them to be people who are uneducated, emotionally challenged, that all of a sudden they need a safe space because somebody got elected that they don't like. I'm going, how can we, how did we get there? But anyway, I'm good, thanks, Ron.
Well, I'll just chime in, is that I take a little bit of exception to the previous speaker. There's the difference between I and we. I is a personal representation of myself and I have complete freedoms. When I've been elected or we have been elected to a position, we have a responsibility to differentiate between we representing our constituents versus I speaking personally. And so we elect people for both, for what I and they think personally, but we also expect them to have the respect that they are in, in a community perspective, representing we when they're in an elected position. And that gets extremely clouded and I hear good people stand up, I am not speaking for my community or my whatever, I'm speaking for myself. That's a clear differentiation, rather than you're speaking for a, a, the people you represent. So it's very important to have that context.
I think the, I think the main difference is, and I think it's kind of take off from what, what Ron was saying, when you're in a leadership position, you have an obligation to make sure that you're not doing anything to make things, I'm going to say, really worse. And with the atmosphere in this country right now, with everybody so politically divided, anybody to, to anybody in elected office to make the kind of comments that Jim made is, and as far as I'm concerned, is totally unacceptable. And I was one of the ones that got up at the Kelso City Council and asked for his immediate resignation. But he does have first, uh, uh, free speech when he's, as Ron said, speaking for himself. But he's representing the city council of Kelso when he got up and made those comments.
You know, this is, this is something that I thought about, um, for a while with everything that's gone on. And I find it very interesting that as a society, we're, we're expected to swallow and accept the most vile disgusting things that people say under the First Amendment right. And yet, when somebody wants to stand up in a public meeting and talk about their religion and talk about God, talk about good things, that's, that's unacceptable, we, we can't do that, we're not supposed to do that. That's part of free speech too, that's covered under the First Amendment. So if we have to, if we have to swallow the garbage that somebody is willing to spew and accept it as a First Amendment right, then we should also, by the flip side of that, accept other people's religious beliefs and the things that they talk about when, in a public setting and in a public meeting. There's nothing wrong with that, that's, that also is protected by the First Amendment. So we have gotten away from the ability to talk about those things in public settings because somebody might get offended. Well, I'm offended at the government. might get offended. Well, I'm offended at the garbage that people get up and spew that's protected under the First Amendment right also. But I, I deal with that because the only reason that the First Amendment has any value at all is because we can say what we want, what we feel. And yes, there might be retribution, but you have, you, you have the, the right to say that. And we also, as, as citizens listening to this stuff, we have the right to form our opinion based on what we hear. But the First Amendment is valuable because sometimes the truth hurts. Sometimes we don't want to hear what people have to say. Sometimes we're disgusted by it. We're offended. All those things are true for both sides of the coin. And I think we need to get back to the point to where it's okay to have public discourse about the good things in life, about people's beliefs and the things that, the values that they stand for and not just listen to all the vile garbage that we have to, that is protected under the First Amendment rights.
Well, this is an interesting conversation. Hello, Commissioners. My name's David Roseland. My name's been mentioned in here a few times. And, uh, I just got a few questions. Mostly it's from Mr. Farrell. Um, you know, I've, I've observed you attending hearings in support of the Hubbard's who have parties, who are parties to ongoing private harassment case against me. Could you please explain here on the record in what capacity you're attending these hearings, whether as a private citizen, a personal acquaintance or a county commissioner?
I attended them as a county commissioner to observe the process. I've attended many hearings sitting in the courtrooms just to observe the process. I haven't attended the district court yet, but I have attended Superior Court. Well, excuse me, I did attend one of the district courts, but I wasn't there necessarily to support anybody. I was there to just observe the process.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. With your respect to this matter of private civil dispute between neighbors, it does not fall within the jurisdiction of the Board of the County Commissioners. Your presence here as a public official aligned with one side of the dispute creates the appearance that the county government is taking sides. That undermines the confidence and fairness of both the hearing process of the county's role. I ask that the record reflect this concern. I respectfully request that you refrain from participating in or lending the weight of your office to this private man.
You've never seen me stand up in support of either side when I've been in a courtroom.
I'm just asking the question.
Okay. Can you say it again? I didn't, maybe I didn't catch this question part of that.
I'm just plainly asking that you refrain.
So you're telling me you don't think I should be in a courtroom to observe what's going on? Whether it's you or anybody else, I shouldn't be in the courtroom? Is that what you're saying?
I have nothing more to say.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. As always, we appreciate you, uh, being part of the process. That's what, uh, makes it work. Uh, so thank you for attending today. Have a great day. God bless. We will adjourn.